Good afternoon, everyone. I called to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roles to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Durkin.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Louie Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Peppin.
Here.
Counselor Santana.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
And Counselor Wurrell. A quorum is present.
Thank you. I have informed the clerk that a quorum is present. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Reverend Liz Walker, invited by Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, I am incredibly honored today to introduce our clergy. For those folks who have followed me, I always talk about a story of a woman who interrupted my entire cycle of poverty. And then Reverend Liz Walker was the first African-American news anchor in the state of Massachusetts. And she went to my high school to share her story. I just so happened to be in school that day because I used to skip a lot of school. And I heard her speak. And I still have the journal entry from that day. And it was February 1, 1989. That's how old I am, y'all. And I am going to introduce you, but I really want to take up this moment because we never know the impact that we're making in people's lives. And sometimes God has a way of bringing people into your hemisphere, if you will, to disrupt your entire cycle of poverty or put you in a direction. And that is what you did for me. And it says, "February 1, 1989. I had a great day today in school. Liz Walker came to our school to speak to us. It was an inspiring moment in my life. It made me realize that I too could be somebody. And that I could also see someone who was into media. It was good. I really want to get into something like that." I didn't know what I was going to be doing. I was almost 20 by the time I graduated, so anyways. But I don't, I just don't know what. "I had a great, wonderful day today in school." Bye-bye. That's what I wrote. Simple. But Liz, Reverend Walker, you have been in so many spaces and places and have created many opportunities for people to heal and to see themselves. And to go from being in the media to now being of service and being a public servant is what inspires me every day. And I know every time I see you, I always think you're going to put a restraining order on me because I am like your biggest fan. And it is such an honor to have you here today to open us up in prayer, especially during National Mental Health Awareness Month because of the work that you do. And I would love for you to come here and open us up in prayer. Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a round of applause? Because I know y'all don't do this, but this is the woman that brought me into this chamber.
I don't usually get that kind of an introduction to pray. Let us take a deep breath. Creator God, God of wisdom and light, bless these leaders today. Govern their hearts and minds as they govern and work for this city. Help all of us to be more like you, to live in truth and mercy, justice and grace, to seek you in everything we do and to see each other in your image beyond our worst moments or our greatest fears. We stand in the gap of a world divided by anxiety and uncertainty, a world where division seems to rule and unity looks impossible. But you have taught us that we are members one of another. Help us to continue to work for the greater good in search of true peace. Help us to remember who we serve. We pray for the people of this city, all the people of this city, whether they work or are without work, whether they are housed or unhoused, fulfilled or frustrated, cluttered with material goods or cluttered with struggling minds. May we better understand their sufferings and longings. Grant us a vision to reach out beyond ourselves, to share what we have, to stretch our capabilities, to increase our sense of purpose. Lead us forward in love and hope in all that we hold holy. For me, that is Jesus Christ. Let the people of God together say, amen. Thank you.
Oh, we're not done with you yet. Yes. So, Liz, I have two citations for you. One is for your lifetime commitment to informing, influencing, and inspiring others to find and fulfill their purpose. This is for you personally.
Okay.
And this is for your work, the work that you have been doing here. This is an official resolution for the Corey Johnson Program in recognition for leading trauma healing efforts in our Boston neighborhoods and promising and promoting a body, mind, and spirit health and wellness across the city. Let it be further resolved that the Boston City Council extends its best wishes and continues success that this resolution is duly signed by the president of the city council, who is a black woman, and attested to and copied there, transmitted by the clerk of the city of Boston. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. [applause]
Take a photo with you.
Absolutely. Just messed up my makeup.
That's okay. You're still looking.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
How are you, sir?
I'm good. I get the little smile.
You look great.
Nice to see you. Thank you.
Well, it's because she's a bad, you know. I'll let you say your name.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you. God bless.
Someone's phone is making a call.
Thank you, Reverend Liz Walker, for all that you do for our city. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Counselor Mejia, and thank you again, Reverend Liz Walker. We are now on to presentations. Counselor Fitzgerald will be recognizing students from Roxbury Prep, followed by Counselors Murphy and Fitzgerald recognizing EMS workers for National EMS Week. Counselor Fitzgerald, you now have the floor in five minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm also joined by my fellow city councilor, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, as we introduce Roxbury Prep. Roxbury Prep now sits in Counselor Fernandez Anderson's district, but the news is it will be soon be moving to District 3 in New Market Square. And I consider it kind of a steal, so I apologize, but we can share them in the future because the name's still Roxbury Prep, all right? But I'm pleased to welcome the students from Roxbury Prep High School here today, currently located in Nubian with the brand new school relocating to District 3 in New Market Square. I recently visited the school about a month ago. And when I tell you, right, all of us have gone around and we've seen a lot of schools, we take a lot of tours, and we see a lot of things. And so, everyone does great work, but sometimes you're really blown away by what one school can do. And when I visited Roxbury Prep to see the education that they were getting, but not only that they were getting, but the participation that they showed in class and standing in the back of the class and watching them answer and watching them challenge the teachers as well, it was something that made me real proud. I was in physics class and I challenged them with a pop question. I said, "Quick, what's the speed of gravity?" And about 5 of them, 9.8 meters per second, like that. And I said, "All right, they're learning. They're learning stuff." So, guys, great job on that. The students here today are a mix of juniors and seniors. Some are involved in the Student Government Association. Others will be taking AP Government as seniors next year. We actually have two of our students here today, both Lear and Minwamba. Lear is going to Princeton University, and Minwamba is going to Holy Cross. They, along with three other people, were featured on Boston 25 and WCVBTV for winning Quest Bridge full scholarships, along with the three others, giving them a full ride to college. So, please, a round of applause for our seniors.[708.00][708.00][applause] Counselor Fernandez Anderson, if you want, I don't know, if you want to say a couple of words, just say, you know, say your goodbyes before they come to Team Fitz.
As Counselor Fitzgerald said, it's still called Roxbury Prep. Congratulations to all of our students here and to Roxbury Prep for a wonderful achievement. Looking forward to continue to visit in neighboring districts. And you guys are amazing. I did a lot of work in Roxbury Prep, have supported your new development, and looking forward to your growth and to continue to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And if we could please invite Roxbury Prep, guys, please come up. We'll take a picture. And if we allow, we'll first, and we'll allow some of the leadership here to speak and just tell them what you guys have been up to. But guys, come on down. Gather all around here. Yeah, come on. Walk all the way up. Some people can hang in front. Tall guys in the back. All right? Yep, come on up. Come on.
I think you can come up too. Thank you.
Where's the bosses? We need someone. We need someone to say something. You're going to, all right, you're going to talk? Go ahead, introduce yourself and tell what you guys are about. Oh, real quick.
Of course. Hi, my name is Minwamba Rufus Dangokwun. I'm a senior class president of a class of 2024, like Counselor Fitzgerald said earlier.[802.66][802.66][applause] Got accepted through Quest Bridge. Roxbury Prep really means a lot to me. The teachers, staff, ops team, every, every one of them are like family to me. They've really helped me find myself. And through rigorous, vigorous classwork, I've really seen my growth inside and outside. I really, really, really appreciate Roxbury Prep from the bottom of my heart, honestly.
Thank you.[832.44][832.44][applause]
My name is Shivari. I'm a rising senior. Extra emphasis on this point that this is like a huge family. I have at least three adults in that building that know me better than I know myself at this point. Come to them with all my problems, and they are like personally invested in my success. Like, there are so many things that they do for us that they don't have to, that they don't need to. Like Ms. Wyatt, our seminar teacher, she had Saturday school. She took time out of her own weekend to teach us extra. And she also brought food, snacks, all of those things. And it's just like, you don't have to do that. Like, it's enough that you're a teacher, but it's just really, it's just, it's really comforting to know that there are people that are not just your teacher, but also like your mentors and advocates, and they're always there for you. And throughout my entire time at Roxbury Prep, I've always had at least one teacher that's been there for me. And yeah.
Thanks, man. Great job.[898.73][898.73][applause] One final round of applause for Roxbury Prep. And thank God, what a lucky city we are to have them and all they do. Could I please invite my counselors up? Is anyone else want to speak up? All set? All right, all right.
Shout out to my coaching supervisor.
All right, we'll shout out, shout out everybody. Counselors, come on up. We'll take a picture.
Also, do we need like a shirt if we pull up?
Yeah, definitely have to do one of these.
Awesome.
Ooh, my knees.
Thank you.
You did it right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can hit it just a little bit.
It's because you want to.
Okay. There you go.
Always a joy to have our kids in the house. So, thank you to Roxbury Prep for being here. We will now have Counselor Murphy and Counselor Fitzgerald, who will be recognizing our EMS workers in honor of National EMS Week. Counselors Murphy and Fitzgerald, you now have the floor in five minutes.
I would like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Flynn. Thank you. And could our EMS union leadership and members join us, please? Thank you for being here. So, we have an official resolution. It is EMS Week. And I'll, I have a little background to this special week. In 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized National EMS, which is the Emergency Medical Services, Week to celebrate and honor the significant contributions of EMS providers in safeguarding the health, safety, and well-being of their communities, and signed a proclamation observing the work of the nation's emergency medical services and the need to increase EMS services. EMS Week 2024, which is celebrated this week from May 19th to the 25th, marks the 50th anniversary of this important event. The theme for this year is honoring our past, forging our future, which is emphasizing the foundational work of those who came before us in EMS while inspiring us to build and lead the EMS system we envision for the next generations of professionals. EMS Week is a perfect time to honor those frontline heroes dedicated to providing emergency medicine that saves so many lives across the city every day. And we extend our sincere condolences to the loved ones of EMS providers who have given their lives in the line of duty. This week in particular, and every week, we urge all Americans, and especially residents of the city of Boston, to express their appreciation for our nation's and Boston's EMS providers. I do want to thank you for being here. I did a ride-along with EMS, with Nick. And I know, Matt, you're always uplifting the needs of your members, and it's so important. You have a hard job. You show up, you clean up, you know all the amazing things you do to keep our city safe. You work alongside our other first responders. But I just wanted to make sure we took this time before the meeting today to make sure we honored you in the way we should. And I'll let my other colleagues speak before you.
No, just want to say thank you to everyone that works at EMS and for what they do. I'll be seeing you guys tomorrow. I'm going to be on call with you guys, so I expect a great tour. And I know I'll learn a lot and appreciate you guys even more after the tour tomorrow. But so, thank you for this week, this week's for you guys. Appreciate it. I also want to highlight the incredible professionalism of our EMS team, but also acknowledge, acknowledge their family as well, their spouses, their children, the sacrifice and services of their families. They've contributed greatly to our city, the health of our city, so congratulations.
Madam President and the rest of the council, I want to say thank you for taking the time out to recognize all of us. It's a tough job. We all didn't get into it for the money, that's for sure.
We're trying to fix it.
We appreciate that. It's, it is a tough job. Like I said, we very much appreciate the support that the council has shown us this year and going forward. We look to work with every one of the counselors to improve our working conditions and make the city better. Thank you.
Thank you. Could our colleagues join us for a photo?[1264.42][1264.42][applause] Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you to our EMS workers for all that you do for our city. So, great that we could honor you today. Mr. Clerk, would you please amend the attendance to reflect that Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson is present? Tanya Fernandez Anderson is present. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of May 15, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last meeting, meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her, on to the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docus number 0864 through 0867?
Document number 0864, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Ala Mukachal as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2027. Document number 0865, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Kerry Walsh Logue as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeal for a term expiring on November 1, 2025. Document number 0866, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Hanzi Beter Baranza as a member of the zoning board of appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2027. And document number 0867, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Sherri Dong as a member of the zoning board of appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2026.
Thank you. Docus number 0864 through 0867 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docut number 0868?
Document number 0868, message in order for your approval, in order authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commission on behalf of the city of Boston to accept, to, excuse me, to acquire by eminent domain, taking a parcel at Zero Dale Street in Hyde Park adjacent to the Sharon Woods Urban Wild as permanently protected parkland to be managed in cooperation with Sharon Woods and to be used, and to use community preservation fund monies appropriated to the Parks and Recreation Department to award damages as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Document number 0868 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docus number 0869 and 0870 together?
Document number 0869, notice received from the mayor of the reappointment of Jeffrey Hawkins as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring May 1, 2029. And document number 0870, notice received from the mayor, the appointment of Jonathan Levine as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring May 1, 2029.
Thank you. Docus number 0869 and 0870 will be placed on file. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Yeah, we will, we'll, let's hold on that. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docut number 0871?
Document number 0871, Counselor Flynn offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss the proposed zoning amendment to remove the half-mile buffer zone between cannabis establishments.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I, Madam Chair, may I add, may I add Counselor Mejia as an original co-sponsor and, is that just Counselor Mejia?
Counselor Mejia is added as an original co-sponsor. Counselor Flynn, you have a floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a hearing to discuss the proposed zoning amendment to remove the half-mile buffer zone between cannabis establishments. Currently, the zoning code requires a buffer zone between schools and dispensaries, as well as a half-mile buffer zone between cannabis establishments, which was a measure passed by the city council in 2016. The buffer is intended to prevent cannabis establishments from opening in clusters so that no particular neighborhood would become the center for cannabis shops to ensure that dispensaries are spread out in the city while allowing access to patients and customers. There is now a proposed zoning amendment that seeks to adjust the buffer zone requirements between cannabis dispensaries and school entrances to 500 feet. That is in line with state requirements. However, it would also remove the half-mile buffer zone between dispensaries. Over the years, residents in all neighborhoods have consistently advocated to enforce and abide by the half-mile buffer zone with cannabis proposals. Many civic groups have expressed concerns at their meetings over the last few weeks on what this amendment would do. Many of our neighbors reside in densely populated areas with existing dispensaries, nearby daycares, student population, nonprofits that also service vulnerable neighbors in close proximity. Removing this half-mile buffer zone would present existing public safety challenges as well, including quality of life issues. One frequent complaint we receive is how difficult it is to enforce the public smoking of marijuana. I've also heard from neighbors that this change would make that problem worse. But allowing the half-mile buffer to lapse could potentially create the same dynamic as package and liquor stores, where they would be oversaturated in the market. They could possibly hurt existing operators. It could create the potential for both new and existing operators to either not engage with civic organizations or walk away from existing community agreements entirely due to the newfound and difficult competition. I don't think that's what residents want. Constituents continue to voice support for the half-mile buffer zone as they see this restriction as both a safeguard for the community voice and against the potential negative impact on quality of life. As I mentioned, the city council drew this plan up. There needs to be a thorough community process for the zoning amendment before any vote should be taken. We need to recognize that each neighborhood is unique and has a different set of challenges. We all support more equity applicants. I have supported a number of equity applicants in operators in District 2, and I know and understand how important that is. But this ballot initiative has had the unintended consequences of mandating so many shops in the city, while the demand may or may not currently be there. People who voted for it may or may not currently be there. People who voted for it also said at the recent BPDA meeting that they want the one-half mile enforced also. Our constituents continue to ask and want the city to listen to them about placing these in appropriate locations in a neighborhood while being mindful of neighborhood issues like pedestrian safety and public safety. I think residents are asking for a voice during this process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Flynn for bringing this to the council. And you are absolutely right. What I have heard in working in this space with a lot of the cannabis dispensaries and some of the owners is that it's important for us to bring this issue of equity. A lot of businesses of color are always, as we know, undervalued and underfunded. And so his point in terms of really looking at the buffer zone is an important conversation to have because a lot of these businesses are being put out of business as a result of folks not even enforcing the buffer zone. I also think that the way the legislation was originally written is flawed because some of the dispensaries can't even sell their license, right? It's like thinking about deed-restricted cannabis licenses, right? You're unable to really build on equity. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done in this conversation as it relates to reform. Buffer zones are already being violated. I have seen in spaces and cases where the zoning board of appeals have not even upheld the existing piece of legislation that is already in the books. And so I really wanted to sign my name on as a co-sponsor because I think it's important for us to have this conversation and the work that our office has been doing in deep partnership with other cannabis dispens, you know, folks who are in the industry. I think that we can learn a lot from folks. And then I just also wanted to uplift that the buffer zone right now, what it does is protects dispensaries. The entire business right now is down. Removing buffer zones will hurt businesses and it would also dilute the value of businesses. So in many ways, we've heard from dispensary owners that it actually protects them. So I think in order for you all to understand the impact, just imagine spending millions of dollars and then someone else opens up right next to you, right? And so I think that this is a conversation worth having. I really do appreciate Counselor Flynn bringing it to the council, and I look forward to working alongside whoever this committee gets appointed to so that we can have a speedy hearing because I think that we have an opportunity to lean into this conversation, bring in some of these folks who are living the realities and or doing the work in the space to make their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counselor Flynn for filing this order. I do agree that this is a conversation we should have. The BPDA has had multiple meetings about the proposed amendment, including a meeting just a couple of weeks ago on May 9. With any new and expanding retail or commercial use across the city, it is essential that we have community and the City Council responsibly engaged in the public processes overseeing changes to these uses. I do want to speak to something mentioned in the hearing order, which states, "Allowing a half-mile buffer zone to lapse could potentially saturate the market, harming existing operators and could create a potential for both new and existing operators to either not engage with civic organizations or walk away from existing community agreements entirely." I think it's helpful to clarify that if an amendment to the buffer zone is approved, all applicants would still be required to go through the Boston Cannabis Board approval process and a zoning appeal process, which involves a host of community outreach. As councillors for downtown districts, I am eager to work with Counselor Flynn and my colleagues to responsibly and equitably balance support for both those who are trying to make their way in this business and support residents who expect their neighbors to provide a diverse range of opinions about these proposed dispensaries. I have and will voice my support for buffer zone changes. A lot of approved dispensaries who have sought and gotten variances have gotten stuck in lengthy litigation for long periods of time. This does provide a heightened risk for pursuing opening this type of establishment, and it means that local business owners have not been able to open up dispensaries and that a lot of nationwide chains are actually the ones who are able to open up these types of establishments. And I want to see equity in this process, and I want to see a range of business owners, both local and national, who are able to open up here. So just wanted to voice my concern for operating outside of the process that does exist, but I'm happy to take part in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. And thank you to the makers for bringing this forward. When this law passed, what I was hearing in meetings across all of the neighborhoods was, there's, you know, there's going to be a pot shot coming. We can't stop it. But many times, I sat through hearings and pushed back from neighbors who said, "Well, we'll approve this one because then we do have this buffer zone and that this will be the one and only in our neighborhood." So this is important that we keep the neighbors' voices part of the conversation because now I think many, what I'm hearing now, is that they're afraid that what they've approved in the past is now not going to matter and that there'll be several pot shops in their neighborhood. In what we saw with liquor stores many years ago, they may end up in certain parts of the city and neighbors won't have the ability to push back. So I'm here for this conversation and also here to uplift the voices of the neighbors who are concerned that this will negatively impact their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernand Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, you know, there's a clear need to reexamine Boston's cannabis policies, and my interest in this conversation in the hearing, please add my name. Thank you to the makers for filing as well. My concerns on this is going to be basically equity, looking at the list of different, just in 02119 in Roxbury, eight licenses have been approved, and half of them are not listing whether or not they're under their equity designation status. It says NA, not applicable. So interested in why they're not being transparent, interested in understanding exactly how it impacts the market. If you do over-saturate thing like the liquor stores, you're either going to have overuse or you're going to have folks that have more money, more influence and marketing abilities and resources to be able to dominate the market. So obviously, a huge concern. And then I would say that in terms of, you know, the policy, I hope that the conversation includes voices that have not heard. We have heard personally or from our office, we've heard concerns from neighbors stating that they have been caught off guard with not receiving notifications for community process. So no, it has not been inclusive. It's not transparent, and thus far, there's a huge concern about over-saturating the market. So looking forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Fernand Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Just want to say, look forward to this conversation as well. We have to balance over-saturation, which we're seeing in a lot of different areas in the city, with concerns of equity to make sure that equity applicants are able to open up shops. So an important conversation that the zoning commission is currently engaged in. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Caletta Zapata, love that, Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, oh, Maker, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Document Number 0871 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Document Number 0, oh, Mr. Clerk, can we go back to reports of public officers and others? Oh, to matters recently heard for possible action?
Document 0670 through Docus 0672, orders for the fiscal year 25 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the school department and for other post-employment benefits, also known as O-PIT. Docus 0673 through 0675, orders for the capital grant fund credited appropriations. And Document Number 0676 through 0678, orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for reading Docus Number 0670 to 0678. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Orrell. Counselor Orrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. As Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, we hosted six FY 2025 budget hearings this past week in one working session to discuss amendments. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the budget hearings we held. On May 16, we held a hearing at 10:00 AM to discuss the budget for veteran services in the Office of Neighborhood Services. This hearing covered topics including Boston 311 and the Office of Civic Organizer. From the administration, we had Commissioner Santiago, from the Veteran Services, Bella Jimboso, I'm not going to be messing up my last name, so I apologize in advance, the Director of Operations from the Office of Veteran Services. We also had Chief Malour from the Office of Civic Engagement, ONS Executive Director Vida Colon, Office of Civic Organizer Director Natalia Beniz, and the 311 Director Erzola Budo. From the City Council, we had Councillors Murphy, Flynn, Vice Chair Peppin, Mejia, Fernand Anderson, Weber, Santana, Durkin, Braden, and Council President Louis Jen. At the hearing, Commissioner Santiago discussed the mission to support veterans and their families through various programs like MGL Chapter 115 Benefits, the Bridge the Gap Program, the Welcome Home Bonus. Emphasis was placed on Memorial Day and Veterans Day activities as the need for better support for aged veterans. The discussion also focused on mental health support, PTSD and veteran suicide prevention efforts. Additionally, the office collaborates with the Boston Housing Authority for Public Housing and Job Training Initiatives to help veterans transition to civilian careers. In meeting with ONS and 311, we dug into topics from the city on the go-truck, notifications of abutted meetings, and whether those meetings should be transferred to the planning department, the collaboration of ONS and 311, and how best to avoid overlap in city meetings. Later that day, we held our first budget offside hearing at 6:00 PM at the Lila Frederick to go over the budget for Age Strong Commission, the Office of Human Services and Youth Engagement and Advancement, the Office of Workforce Development and Youth Employment and Opportunity. From the administration, we had Office of Human Resource Chief Maso, Office of Youth Engagement and Advancement Director Pedro Cruz, Age Strong Commissioner Shea, Age Strong Deputy Commissioner Cuero, and Age Strong Senior Director Melissa Carlson. And Miles Garrity also joined in from the Office of Workforce Development with Chief Nguyen, Chief of Staff Joseph Lee, Deputy Chief Rashad Coop, and YEO Executive Director Allison Veneri, and YEO Deputy Director Adola Ibozokian. From the City Council, we had Councillors Weber, Peppin, Mejia, Santana, Fernand Anderson, Flynn, and Council President Louis Jen. I want to thank my council colleagues, central staff, IDR, and the administration for working late as this meeting went until 10:00 PM. We kicked off the hearing with one and a half hours of public testimony. We dove into the presentations with the administration. Public testimony highlighted the importance of increasing funding for youth jobs and raising the pay rate from 15 to 18 to $24 per hour due to Boston's high cost of living. There was a desire for more summer jobs and more year-round jobs through Success Link. The adverse impact of budget cuts on youth employment programs and community service was also discussed. Seniors and other advocates stressed the necessity of proper funding for senior services, including safety, program accessibility, and nutritious meals. Chief Maso presented an overview of the Human Resource Services Cabinet, highlighting the Youth Development Fund, the Emerging Leaders Program, and efforts in safety and lifeguard recruitment. Commissioner Shea discussed the growing older adult population and the department's strategic plan for programming for elders in the fall. In discussion with the Youth Employment and Opportunity Department, it was stated that last summer, nearly 9,000 jobs were provided by YEO with 5,500 through Success Link. However, 3,000 students went unplaced, meaning they wanted a job through YEO and couldn't get one. For year-round jobs, we placed 1,500 students through the Success Link and 3,500 students went unplaced. It was said that to meet the current demand, 23 million would need to be allocated to youth jobs. Additionally, paying out stipends for college readiness, summer programs, we'll discuss, along with a pilot program for that at Bunker Hill Community College. On May 17, Friday at 10:00 AM, we held our second working session to discuss budget amendments. Councillors Flynn, Fitzgerald, Braden, Weber, Mejia, Vice Chair Peppin, and Murphy were present to discuss their priorities and amendments they'd like to make in the FY 25 budget. Possible amendments included upgraded testing equipment at the BPD crime lab, increase to the city housing voucher program, and to down payment assistance program. Additionally, youth coordinators, a full-time maintenance worker at Jamaica Pond, more youth jobs, funding for Louis D. Brown, pilot program to dispose of overflow programs, RAP birth control, street captain roles for youth, solar lighting at parks, better funding for our Boston Finance Commission. On May 20, at 10:00 AM, we held a hearing to go over the budget for Boston Parks and Recreation and related revolving funds. From the administration, we had interim environment Chief Osgood, Park Commissioner Woods, and Parks Director Baker Eclipse, Tracy Lee, and Darlene Buford, as well as General Superintendent of Maintenance and Operation Superintendent Altidore. From the City Council, we had Councillors Murphy, Vice Chair of the Committee Peppin, Counselor Fitzgerald, Braden, Mejia, Santana, Durkin, Flynn, and Council President Louis Jen were present for the hearing. The Parks and Recreation Department highlighted the permanent process for field use, the increased tree canopy team that is solely focused on sidewalks, trees, and accommodating the increase of pickleball interest, the Open Space Fund, revenue from our golf courses, a $1 million shadow study, push-button lights for parks, and the upcoming Bear Garden Pilot across seven parks. Public testimony during the hearing included support for renovations and improvements to various parks, advocating for keeping playground lights on during winter evenings, concerns about the condition and maintenance of Jamaica Pond and other parks, and requests for increased funding for the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute for Burial Services. On May 20, Monday at 2:00 PM, we held a hearing to go over the budget for the Boston Housing Authority and the Mayor's Office of Housing. From the administration, we had Chief Dillon, MOH Deputy Directors Wilson, Johnson, and Rabaza, and BHA Administrator Bach. From the City Council, we had Councillors Flynn, Vice Chair of the Committee Peppin, Counselor Santana, Murphy, Braden, Mejia, Fitzgerald, Weber, Durkin, and Council President Louis Jen. The discussion included the BHA's waitlist of 42,000 people for 14,000 units, the city voucher program, home improvement programs for seniors and veterans, youth programs at public housing, elevator challenges, MOH Welcome Home Boston Project, and the good news that there's a 76-year-over-year uptick in new housing starts in the city. A need for greater outreach about the family self-sufficiency funds, post-mortem property insurance, and a more realistic HOA fee were discussed. Additionally, updates on the tenant stabilization fund and turning BHA scattered site units into homeownership opportunities were also shared. On May 21, Tuesday at 10:00 AM, we held a hearing to go over the budget for the Law Department and Treasury Department. For the administration, we had First Assistant Collector Treasurer Garso, Deputy Treasurer Bradley, First Assistant Collector Treasurer Barton, Corporation Counsel Cederbaum of the Law Department, and Law Department Chief of Staff Ortiz. From the City Council, we had Councillors Flynn, Murphy, Braden, Mejia, Fitzgerald, Weber, and Santana. Topics discussed included the city's 99.2% collection rate on taxes and treasury process for placing liens. The Law Department, the Law Department Council discussed the use of outside counsel, which is 22% of its budget, the amount of settlements in cases in the past year, the large uptick in public record requests in the past three years, and the integration of the planning department. And lastly, yesterday, May 21, we met to go over the budget for the Environment Department, the Office of Food Justice and related revolving funds. From the administration, we had interim Chief Osgood of Environment, Energy, and Open Space, Environment Inter Commissioner Sellers Garcia, Environment Director of Finance Rogers, and Director of the Office of Food Justice Wasserman. From the City Council, we had Councillors Flynn, Weber, Vice Chair of the Committee Peppin, Braden, Mejia, and Fitzgerald. At the hearing, we discussed environmental issues such as the Berdaroos, stormwater management, coastal resiliency projects for the beaches and parks that we have in our city, and improvements to roadways. On food justice, we covered farmers' market coupons for the winter low-cost or no-cost mobile food trucks from the city, and how to better engage the community. Each hearing has provided important insights from proven city governance, and I want to thank all my councillors for the collaboration in the budget process. I want to give a big shout out to central staff for all their hard work, and these orders will remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Worrell. As you continue to shepherd us through this budgeting process, really appreciate all of your hard work and your team's effort and central your hard work and your team's effort, and central staff, like you said, for the offsite meeting that happened last Wednesday at the Lila Frederick last Thursday. So, thank you, central staff, for making that happen. We are returning to motions, orders, and resolutions. Oh, okay, docket number zero six seven zero to zero six seven eight will remain in committee. We are now returning back to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number zero eight seven two?
Docket number zero eight seven two, Councillors Worrell and Peppin, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the creation of cultural districts in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Worrell. Councillor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Council President Louis Jen as the original co-sponsor.
Thank you. The Chair sees suspension of the rules to add Council Louis Jen as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Council Louis Jen is so added. Councillor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. Boston is the sixth most diverse city in the United States, a fact that is often overlooked. We have been and continue to been a beacon for those searching for a new home, and cultural districts provide us with a unique opportunity to foster local cultural development, encourage business growth, and enhance Boston as a vibrant tourist destination. Cultural districts will allow us to recognize, embrace, and educate others on the diverse cultures for our residents, as well as the city's history of immigration and first-generation peoples. The creation of cultural district is not just a cultural win. It's a significant win for small businesses. We already, of course, have Chinatown, as well as Little Saigon and Fields Corner. In my district, we have the potential to identify areas that can be celebrated as cultural districts for many Caribbean and African families, such as Cape Verdean families, Brazilian, and so on. More cultural districts will enhance the ability of immigrant communities to grow, develop economic opportunities, and interact with one another to build more vibrant spaces in the city of Boston. This hearing order is a collaboration point between all of our districts. Boston currently boasts two cultural districts, the Latin Quarter Cultural District in Hyde Park, Jackson Square, and Little Saigon and Fields Corner. These areas serve as cultural center hubs for our Latinx and Vietnamese communities, and respectively, we're trying to spread that throughout the city of Boston. So, looking forward to having this conversation with all my council colleagues and all the stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Worrell. The Chair recognizes Council Peppin. Council Peppin, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councillor Worrell, for having me part of this hearing order. You know, the establishment of cultural districts across our city will play a crucial role by fostering a vibrant arts scene, preserving heritage, and promoting our diverse backgrounds. These districts will serve as hubs for creativity and innovation, attracting tourists from all over the place, educating visitors on our rich diverse history, and boost our local economy. These areas also provide community spaces where people can connect, celebrate their cultural identities, and engage in meaningful dialogue, thereby enhancing social cohesion and enriching the overall quality of our city. We can already see how these districts already benefit our city, like the beautiful feast celebrations that happen in the North End, the Vietnamese night market in the Fields Corner, and as my colleague mentioned, the Latin Quarter in Jamaica Plain. I would look for us to expand these cultural districts. In my district specifically, we have a beautiful Haitian community, Caribbean community, Puerto Rican community. So, I would like to make sure that we bring these cultural representations into all of
I want to thank our municipal police officers for all the really great work that they do
our districts and continue to celebrate the rich diversity that exists in our city.
to make sure that we are safe. Their security protocols and procedures, so everything is under control.
I hope that I'm able to work with all of you to make this a reality. Thank you.
I want to thank Sergeant Silda for updating me and for all the work that they do to make Thank you, Council Peppin. As the third co-sponsor, I'll just say that I'm looking forward to this work. sure that everyone in this building is safe. Councillor Worrell uplifted so many of the rich communities that we have and the cultural Councillor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and yes, shout out to our Boston Municipal Police
districts that already exist. There's incredible opportunity to continue expanding on that, and we want to make sure
Officers who keep us safe every single day.
that economic development and opportunity comes alongside the designation of a cultural
We appreciate them and thank them. I wanted to rise just briefly and say thank you to the makers of this hearing order. I look forward to the conversation.
district, and we will work to make that so.
As Madam President mentioned, East Boston is currently going through its own cultural
Laurie from Civil Rights is having a conversation in East Boston that Councillor Coletta Zapata
designation, and I want to thank the consortium of amazing powerhouse organizations that have stepped up to do this, like LCR, Veronica Robles, Harbor Arts, Central Presente, East
and the East Boston delegation are a part of. And so, I know that we've talked about Little Haiti and Matapan, so I'm looking forward
Boston Main Streets, MCLS, the ICA, and Green Roots. The goal really is to celebrate East Boston's rich immigrant history.
to having more of this conversation with my colleagues.
We've always been a welcoming and inclusive community for immigrants, all the way from
I do just want to state, I know that some people have seen, everything is okay in the building at the moment.
Eastern Europeans to Western Europeans and now Latin and Central Americans.
Everyone's fine, and we have a security protocol that we follow. I'm going to just ask for a quick recess for one minute.
So, it is incumbent upon us to honor this history and uplift our economic centers so
No one has to leave, just a quick, brief recess.
that we can bring people together and foster community that way. The question right now through this process is, who has the capacity to run this and do this, and then also who has the money? So, that is usually the main questions in any conversation when a bright and creative idea comes through. So, I look forward to the conversation and bringing in voices from East Boston to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Coletta Zapata, and for remembering the other organizations involved. I just mentioned LCR, but there are so many other organizations in East Boston involved with that designation. The Chair recognizes Councillor Flynn. Councillor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Madam Chair, please add my name, honored to join my colleagues in support of this, and I know very well the important role these cultural districts play across our city, and whether they're officially designated or not. One thing I can say is they play a tremendous role in our neighborhoods, they play a tremendous role in our city. I'm proud to represent a large immigrant population in District Two, including a large Chinese community, a large Somali, a growing Somali community as well, a large Spanish-speaking community in the South End. But what I do want to highlight is Boston is an immigrant city, and this city respects our immigrant roots, our proud immigrant roots, and the contributions that they have made to our city and to our country. And just wanted to highlight when people do come into the City Hall on the Congress Street side, I just want to remind people, if you want to take a look at that memorial out front of City Hall on Congress Street, placed there by Mayor Flynn, it's a welcoming for all immigrants into Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Fernandez Anderson. Councillor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I thank you so much to the makers for filing this. Of course, I'm going to talk about the ottery. In my first term, I created an art corridor in District Seven. Considering that Roxbury is the heart of Boston, its ottery should flow healthy blood throughout Boston. Get it? Art-tery. And so, revitalizing storefronts and activating arts, but also murals, and creating a corridor a three-mile stretch between South End all the way to Grove Hall, extending into Councillor Worrell's district, it would not only revitalize these spaces, hopefully adding foot traffic, adding foot traffic, and as well as boosting our economy. Connecting to tourism is great, but one thing that it also does, it preserves culture and history. And this is important because of displacement. If we do this intentionally, we fight, not only do we fight commercial displacement, but climate displacement, as well as housing displacement. With a holistic approach to housing or development and planning to District Seven, we can take a look at spatial mapping, we can take a look at the asset mapping project that we did with Northeastern University, as well as our next project with MIT, and be able to understand exactly where housing ecosystems need to go. For example, adding amenities alongside these corridors would add these amenities to specific spaces based on the need. I've announced to you guys before that the Boston Foundation has supported our initiatives in, again, not just the cultural districts, but activating corridors or revitalizing corridors, but also looking at these housing ecosystems in terms of moving forward with holistic planning and development for Roxbury specific. So, what's very interesting about this is that we can start looking at the districts or cultures that are absent of our list, and specifically, when we look at the list, we know that there's events for the West Indian or Caribbean community, there are events for the Haitian community, and there are events, there are specific arts culture for the Latin community, the Chinese community, the Vietnamese community, but there is nothing specific to African-American community. And so, we do need to be very intentional when we're talking about our cultural districts and preserving the culture and history of the African-American people, or just the Afro-centric culture. And so, I wanted to, one, again, thank you so much for filing, looking forward to the conversation, being very intentional in how we connect districts to districts, right? Can we have our electric shuttle bus program that I've been talking about, where we can shop, go from Beacon Hill to South End to Matapan, all in a free electric shuttle program so that we can begin to cross-market between the districts? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councillor Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Councillor Mejia. Councillor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to just uplift someone really quick before I go into my remarks. Sisneel Bias, who was, and I've known her forever, but she was one of the leading voices in Hyde Square in Jamaica Plain when it was time to turn, to do some advocacy around turning that into a cultural district, and has been on the forefront preserving Hyde Square and Jamaica Plain in particular. So, I just want to give her a shout out, because when we're talking about creating cultural districts and cultural hubs, it's really important to understand the fight that it takes for those things to happen. So, I just want to uplift some of the folks that have been on the ground doing that work and our office worked alongside Hyde Square Task Force not too long ago on some things, and so I know that, I just wanted to name that, that because of its designation, they was able to have some really good turnout there. But I also just want to uplift that our office alongside you, Councillor Worrell, we established the Office of Cultural Affairs here in the city of Boston. Now, it's the Executive Director is Alejandro Valdez, who now is going to be overseeing five positions for cultural advisors. And as I always say, that Boston is resource-rich and coordination-poor, I think we have a real opportunity of working in partnership with that office to really look at the five different cultural advisors that have been assigned, because there are many ways for us to work collaboratively, and I think that we have an opportunity to think about what role that office can play in helping to support this advocacy. And so, I just want to just go on the record to sign my name on to this hearing. I'm really excited about the energy, and I just want to just acknowledge my other colleague who referenced the fact that cultural districts are important, and we're talking about immigrants, and I think that that is important. But I also do think that when I think about culture, I just don't think about immigrants. I think about culture and also just the way of being, and I think that there is something to be said around Lubian Square being the black cultural district, right? I think, you know, there is an opportunity for us to include that into the conversation so it's not just around the immigrant experience, but that we're looking at culture as a whole, not just in the ways that we have been taught to. So, I just want to affirm that and go on the record to say that as we continue to have these conversations, I look forward for them to being as robust as possible.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councillors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber. Docket number zero eight seven two will refer to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero eight seven three?
Docket number zero eight seven three, Councillors Durkin and Louis Jen, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the creation of a Parks Administrator for downtown parks, including the Boston Common, Public Garden, Commonwealth Ave Mall, Copley Square, and Christopher Columbus Park.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Durkin. Councillor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Council President Louis Jen as the original co-sponsor.
Thank you. The Chair sees suspension of the rules to add Council Louis Jen as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Council Coletta Zapata is so added. Council Durkin, you have the floor. I do want to say thank you to Roxbury Prep for being with us today. Thank you to Council Joe for inviting them. My staffer, Hodin, is a rock, went to Roxbury Prep, and she wanted to make sure that I said that. So, much love to Roxbury Prep and to Hodin, my staffer. Councillor Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. The Boston Common Master Plan lays out a bold vision for the future, proposing over one hundred and fifty million in capital improvements, as well as improvements in park care and management. A downtown parks administrator is an important recommendation of this plan, some of which these improvements that are called for in the Boston Common Master Plan are included in this year's capital budget. In order to manage the intense use of several of our downtown parks, including the Boston Common, the Public Garden, the Commonwealth Ave Mall, Copley Square, and Christopher Columbus Waterfront Park, these parks need a newly-created position of Parks Administrator dedicated to overseeing the maintenance and management of the city's most heavily permitted and used green spaces. A long-awaited administrator position was recently created for Franklin Park after dedicated community advocacy. The Friends of the Public Garden spends an average of two million dollars annually on the care of the Boston Common, Public Garden, and Commonwealth Mall. Their leadership is incredibly important. They've also been calling for a downtown parks administrator. This position comes at a fraction of the Boston Parks and Recreation Department's operating budget, but creates an outsized benefit. If we were to get one percent of the capital budget allocated to green spaces citywide, last year that would have meant thirteen million more for the Boston Parks Department. This position is a huge fraction of what parks advocates are calling for and more investment in the parks. And I think we can all recall how our parks serve many different functions, from choir reprieve to summer festivals, winter tree lightings, and protest. Not to mention the host of diverse natural landscape whose beauty, growth, and health is dependent upon continuous and careful management. Our parks do a lot for us, and adding this position would do something for our parks so that they can continue to deliver all the benefits we depend on from our green spaces. I look forward to having this conversation to discuss the expansion of an administrator position to the downtown parks with the participation of other downtown district counselors, the Franklin Park District Counselor, and the Parks Department. I think part of why I'm bringing this forward is I will be pushing for it in this year's budget, but I think it merits more of a holistic and detailed conversation, and I'm excited to take part with my colleagues. And I want to thank Council President Louis Jen and Councillor Gabriela Coletta Zapata for joining me in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Durkin, and I'll just say thank you for your leadership and for adding me here. I think on the hearing we had on Monday, Commissioner Woods was talking about this and how we already have the Franklin Park Administrator will be a good model and example for this work. I want to shout out to the incredible work that the Friends that they do and how they are working now to support Friends groups and parks around the city. And I think that's just, it's really great to think about how we share our resources around the city. I think this is very much needed. Our parks are one of our greatest assets, and we should be investing further in our public good. So, thank you, and I look forward to this hearing. The Chair recognizes Councillor Coletta Zapata. Please tell us how to correctly say your new name, counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. Coletta Zapata is great. Thank you so much for that. I'm just rising to thank my council colleagues for pushing this forward. We see millions of folks every single year go through Christopher Columbus Park, and I want to thank the board, especially Joanne Hayes- so that they can continue to deliver all the benefits we depend on from our green spaces. I look forward to having this conversation to discuss the expansion of an administrator position to the downtown parks with the participation of other downtown district counselors, the Franklin Park District Counselor, and the Parks Department. I think part of why I'm bringing this forward is I will be pushing for it in this year's budget, but I think it merits more of a holistic and detailed conversation, and I'm excited to take part with my colleagues. And I want to thank Council President Lu Yen and Counselor Gabriela Coletta Zapata for joining me in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin. And I'll just say thank you for your leadership and for adding me here. I think on the hearing we had on Monday, Commissioner Woods was talking about this and how we already have the Franklin Planet Administrator, Franklin Park Administrator will be a good model and example for this work. I want to shout out to the incredible work of the Friends that they do and how they are working now to support Friends groups and parks around the city. And I think that just, it's really great to think about how we share our resources around the city. I think this is very much needed. Our parks are one of our greatest assets, and we should be investing further in our public good. So thank you, and I look forward to this hearing. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta Zapata. Please tell us how to correctly say your new name, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. Coletta Zapata is great. Thank you so much for that. I'm just rising to thank my council colleagues for pushing this forward. We see millions of folks every single year go through Christopher Columbus Park, and I want to thank the board, especially Joanne Hayes Ryan, who's a close friend of mine, and the work that she does, and wanting to make sure that we always center their conversation, especially if they're in a flood zone, coastal resiliency, so having somebody that is, has a lens for that and sustainability. So look forward to the conversation, and just, again, just want to thank you for uplifting it and putting me on as their co-sponsor. Thanks.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the sponsors. Please add my name, Madam Chair. And I just want to highlight the important work that the former city councilors have played on these issues. I've worked closely with Councilor Bark and Councilor Zakeem as well on the Boston Common. Proud to have worked with them, that being in my district as well, in the Copley area, as well as the Christopher Columbus Park up until redistricting. So want to continue to work with my colleagues in ensuring that our parks and green space and open spaces are accessible to all. But I do want to highlight the residents that use these parks. A lot of them are in my district, which I'm proud of, and I'm trying to get more residents from Chinatown to frequent the Public Garden, to frequent the Boston Common, because these parks are open to everybody, and I'm proud to work with the Friends of Public Garden to ensure that this park is open, accessible. But we also need to do more work on public safety-related issues. We have major concerns in the Boston Common. I was there last week with the Boston Police and with residents on Tremont Street, and we have significant challenges, public safety concerns, in Boston, on the Boston Common. And those are some of the issues I'm going to continue to work with along with the colleges and universities, including Suffolk University, Emerson College. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Mejia. Councilwoman Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank my colleagues for introducing this, and, you know, I think it's important to name that when I look, well, I'll speak for myself, is that, like, the Boston Common, Christopher Columbus Park, a lot of those parks, like, it wasn't until I was a city councillor that I started going to those spaces and places, right? And I think that as we're thinking about these conversations, I really want to make sure that we are censoring accessibility and that these parks are really doing everything that they can, even as if you're going to have a formal role, that we're looking at increasing our diversity efforts and making them more engaging and inclusive. And I've seen some of that happening, but I think that as we continue to have these conversations, especially with parks, that we need to do a better job at making sure that people see themselves in all spaces and places. And I'm really excited that if we have a position or a department that's dedicated to that, that there'll be some of that happening, and that we can hold ourselves to some benchmarks and some equity goals, if you will. I think that that would be a really great part of the conversation, because, like I said, it wasn't until I became a city councillor that I went, not because I didn't feel like I belonged, it was because I didn't even know some of these parks even existed. And so I think it's important. And it's not just people of color, it's also just low-income, it's people who have access to, and there's folks who don't, and I just think that. And the parks are beautiful, and I think everyone should be able to enjoy them. And so I would love to have a conversation about what that engagement would look like. And as you continue to shepherd this conversation through the process, I want to make sure that we're looking at accessibility for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add Councilor Fernandez Anderson. This docket, docket number 0873, will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0874.
Docket number 0874, Councilor Flynn offered the following. Resolution commemorating Memorial Day and honoring those who made the supreme sacrifice for our country and our Gold Star families.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I filed this resolution in advance of Memorial Day on Monday so that the city council and the city of Boston can honor those who made the supreme sacrifice in service to our country, especially our Gold Star families. Memorial Day, once known as Decoration Day, started as a day for people to decorate the graves of the war dead with flowers immediately after the Civil War. Decoration Day continued to be observed on the local level. In 1968, the U.S. Congress passed the Uniform Monday Holiday Act, which established Memorial Day as the last Monday in May. On Memorial Day, the country pays respect to the more than 1.1 million American military personnel who have made the supreme sacrifice for their country while serving in uniform, as well as our Gold Star family members. It's a solemn day. It's not a day for cookouts. It's not a day for partying. It's a day to stop, to ponder, to think, to say a prayer for the men and women that paid the supreme sacrifice for our nation. The city of Boston itself has numerous events leading up to Memorial Day. But because of the pandemic this year, and over the years, many of the events have been suspended. But what we are seeing is more people coming back, recognizing the tremendous sacrifice that our Gold Star families have made. The city of Boston Veterans Services, Veterans Organizations, will have many events that will take place on Sunday and Monday, whether it's a Puerto Rican Veterans Event in the South End, African American Veterans Event in Roxbury, or the Fitzgerald Post in South Boston, out in West Roxbury. There's many across the city. I'm filing this resolution today because it's important that we recognize that their sacrifice, their service, their bravery shall never be forgotten. Madam Chair, I'd like to suspend and pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to sponsor, Councilor Flynn, for filing this. As you all know, I am a proud Marine mom. My son was in college when he turned to me one day and expressed wanting to serve. Having a child in the Marines is all at once, both an honor and also deeply humbling. I'm honored because the spirit of service that I possess is one that my son feels towards this country. But on days like Memorial Day, I am reminded of the supreme sacrifice that many men and women in uniform make, and the immense weight that falls on Gold Star families to keep the memory of their children and parents alive. As a mom, my heart breaks for these families, and I hope that the work that we do here in the council to create better, more equitable Boston, that it demonstrates that their sacrifice was not made in vain. Thank you to our Gold Star families. You and the sacrifices made by those whose lives were lost are in my heart today and on Memorial Day and every day. Thank you again to my colleague, the sponsor, and please add my name.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Peppin. Councilor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilor Flynn, for bringing this here today. I just want to rise in support of this, and specifically, you know, in District 5, there's a lot of Gold Star families. One of them in particular I do want to honor and shout out is the family of Melida Arredondo. Her son served and obviously passed away in service. So we, I'd like to honor her today and in this Memorial Day weekend. I say this with a heavy heart, I just, I've had family that served. My best friend currently out in Japan at the moment, serving in the United States Navy. And I'm just so thankful for everyone that has served, for everyone that has paid the ultimate sacrifice, and to those Gold Star families that live in our city, just thank you for your family service. That's all.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Councilor Flynn, for bringing this forward. I know that Commissioner Santiago does an amazing job of reminding us that Memorial Day is not Veterans Day, that it's a day to remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And I do want to shout out, uplift Dan McGoon and the Kelly family and the team at Mass Fallen Heroes, who does an amazing job supporting our Massachusetts Gold Star families, along with other organizations around the state and the country. I do also just want to uplift that my son was sworn in last week into the airborne infantry with the Army. So also, along with Councilor Fernandez Anderson, share that I have a son in the military. So a new failing. A daughter is one thing, but being a mom of military, you have a new appreciation for the sacrifices that these families go through. I know that we uplift the wives, the families, and those left behind. And like our first responders, those who are in the military, their family serves along with them and sacrifice a lot and keep everything going back home. So I just want to make sure that the Gold Star families in the city of Boston and across the country know that myself and this body is uplifting them, and we'll do whatever we can to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to you and your son, Councilor Murphy. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. Thank you so much to Counselor Flynn for always representing the military and always representing where he comes from. I just wanted to announce that on Memorial Day, the Mission Hill Post does a beautiful ceremony for those that have been fallen, and they have a beautiful memorial at 11:00 a.m. in Brigham Circle. They also have a dinner tonight. They like to go to Quincy, so I've joined them for dinner before. They like to go to Victory Point, which is a beautiful area, Marina and Quincy. So they'll be there tonight. I'm hoping I can catch them after a litany of events tonight. But also just wanted to uplift, we did a hero square for Private First Class Nelson Edward Young of Mission Hill this year, right as I became a councillor, I guess, late last year. And I know Memorial Day is for those who have fallen, but thank you to everyone who currently serves, including my brother-in-law, Eric Finley. You know, my sister lives near a, for, you know, my sister lives in Texas, near a military base, and, you know, have learned a lot about people who have lost people and those that are also lost, not just to war, but to those who, you know, who commit suicide, you know, which are far too many in, I think, uplifting mental health and uplifting knowing that some of what happens to families after service is, it isn't just about what happens in war, but also, but what happens after and the toll that it takes on mental health. And really grateful, again, to Counselor Flynn for all that he does to uplift, uplift these struggles. And I will be there on Monday, so I hope some of my colleagues can join if they're available. They usually join and have a lunch after, so if you're going to multiple things, we usually have lunch after at, across the street. So thank you so much. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank Councilor Flynn for offering this resolution commemorating Memorial Day. On Monday at 11 o'clock at the Evergreen Cemetery, there will be a Memorial Day celebration. We do it every year. I want to thank Kelly McGrath and the folks at Brighton Elks and the Brighton Marine who are taking on the organizing of this annual event. And also thanks to the La Rossi family, who've organized it for many, many years in the past. So I hope if anyone's available to come out to Evergreen on Monday morning at 11:00 a.m. at Evergreen Cemetery. You'll be very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Thank you for recognizing the work of the La Rossi family. They've been doing a really great job every year at Evergreen on that wonderful ceremony. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah. Madam Chair, could I add Counselor Peppin as an original co-sponsor, please?
Counselor Peppin, so add as an original co-sponsor. The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you. Just want to rise and say thank you to Councilor Flynn for constantly advocating for our veterans. And I also just want to lend my support for all the veterans and their families that have served and have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom, for this country, that we get to enjoy today. And I just want to give a big shout out to all my family members that are currently serving, and also to central staff, Shane. So just wanted to rise in support and thank Counselor Flynn for his continued advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I just want to also thank Counselor Flynn for filing this, and want to thank the Office of Veteran Services, who, they do an incredible job marking the solemn day and moment as we remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice and may it not be in vain. Mr. Clerk, is anyone else looking to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell? Please add the chair. Councilors Flynn and Peppin, see suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0874. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 0874 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0875?
Docket number 0875, Counselor Flynn offered the following. Resolution in support of H.R. 6452, Veterans Scam and Fraud Evasion Be Safe Act.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a resolution in support of H.R. 6452, which is the Veterans Scam Fraud Evasion Act before the Congress, which seeks to address the issue of scam and frauds against veterans. We were talking about the service of our veterans prior to this, the benefits they earned. Yet veterans often become targets of scammers, similar to what we're seeing with seniors. We had a recent hearing with the Age Strong, and the commissioner was talking about that as well. But we're also seeing it with veterans being taken advantage of, retirees being taken advantage of. And there's a proposal in the Congress, supported by the disabled American veterans, because over 74,000 veterans already, and retirees, have reported fraud or identity theft last year alone. This bill would establish the position of Veterans Scam and Fraud Evasion Officer in the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, and that person will be responsible for fraud and scam prevention reporting, as well as incident response plans at the VA. This office will also provide guidance on how to identify, report, avoid fraud, and scam attempts to veterans, military families, caregivers, survivors. They're taking advantage of vulnerable people at times. This bill will facilitate the coordination across federal departments to work on veterans' fraud prevention and reporting, required that the VA develop ways to monitor this fraud, and analyze the data, provide internal and external reporting. Again, I mentioned it's being supported by the DAV. It will help our veterans in avoiding, in reporting, and be taken advantage, and ensure that they are able to receive all the benefits that they are entitled to. Some may ask, why am I concerned about federal legislation? And I guess the answer is, we have so many veterans in Boston, but the majority of services, programs that impact veterans are at the federal level. But it's important for veterans to weigh in on federal legislation because it impacts them greatly here in Boston, across Massachusetts. We have an exceptional team at the city of Boston Veterans Services Department that works closely with the state, also has a Veterans Service Department as well, Commissioner Santiago and Secretary Santiago. But it's important that city, state, and federal officials all work together to identify services, programs, ways we can help veterans and military families to ensure that the services and programs that they have earned, services and programs that they have earned, continue. And at times when we see federal government, we see state government, or we see city government looking to cut budgets, let's remember that these budgets that we're cutting for veterans impact the low-income veterans, they impact homeless veterans. So let's work together, support each other, support our veterans and their military families as well. as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter?
I just want to thank you for filing this during the hearing. Commissioner Santiago mentioned this, and there's a special place not good for people who take advantage of our most vulnerable populations, including our veterans. And I know oftentimes, I belong to a profession, lawyers, there, some also are involved in that, not great activity, and so want to lend my support to this and make sure that we try to stop all sorts of frauds, stop all sorts of ways that people take advantage of our most vulnerable populations, which include our veterans. Is anyone looking to add their name? Mr. Clerk, will you please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Peppin, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Counselor Flynn, see suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number, Counselor Flynn, see suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0875. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed, has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0876?
Docket number 0876, Counselor Murphy and Fitzgerald, offer the following. Resolution recognizing and celebrating Emergency Medical Services Week.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. I know we gave a presentation at the beginning of the hearing, and I did at that point suspend the rules to add Counselor Flynn, but I do want to take a vote now. I'd like to suspend and pass this resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy, see suspension of the rules to add Counsel Flynn as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Flynn is so added. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Fernandez Anderson, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Counselors Flynn, Counselors Murphy, Fitzgerald, and Flynn, see suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0876. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. The ayes have it, this docket has been adopted. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Docket number 0877, Counsel Louie Jean for Counselor Peppin, personnel order. Docket number 0878, Counsel Louie Jean for Counselor Durkin, personnel order. And docket number 0879, Counsel Louie Jean for Counselor Murphy, personnel order.
Thank you. The Chair moves to passage of dockets number 0877 to 0879. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you, the personnel orders have passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'm looking to pull 0755, which needs to be voted on today, or it automatically becomes a landmark.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0755 into the record?
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, on page 11 of the green sheets, docket number 0755. Communication received by the city clerk from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the designation of the Putnam Nail Factory, George Lawley &amp; Sons Shipyard, 12-12 R Erickson Street, Boston, Mass. as a landmark, in effect after June 1, 2024, if not acted upon.
Thank you. Docket, docket number 0755 is properly before the body. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you. This docket is a report from the Landmarks Commission on their vote to designate 12 and 12 R Erickson Street as landmarks. This designation was presented to our body on May 1, meaning we have until June 1 to act on it. However, since we don't have a meeting next week, today is the last day we have to vote on it. Having spoken to the owner and to Counselor Fitzgerald, whose district it is in, and having fully read the study report, I would urge the body to vote no on this designation. The owner had not been notified of the process to designate this as a landmark, and only learned after the study report had already been published in February this year. The subsequent vote for designation came in April, which the owner was not able to attend due to receiving the wrong Zoom meeting link. In addition, the owner states that these two buildings were subject to a previous attempt to landmark them in 1996. This landmarking was in response to the owner attempting additions and repairs to the two buildings, and came from neighbors seeking to block these additions. The owner never proceeded with the additions, and this landmarking failed. It is unclear who is behind this year's landmark petition, but the owner says that no one from the community has asked for this. Considering this, I ask that we vote no on this designation. I would also like to let Counselor John Fitzgerald add his thoughts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President. I appreciate my colleagues in hopefully joining me in voting this not to be a landmark. What this seems to be is it was like a cold case reopened, and as a new owner, he does not want the landmark designation. And unfortunately, actually, the history in this area of building the PT boats during the war, where those boats were built, those buildings were actually torn down long ago, so we missed our chance to actually properly make a historic landmark out of what was history. These buildings that are currently there are not actually very historic at all, so we're looking to vote this down today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
So I'd like to move for a vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, sorry. Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Mr. Clerk, can we please do a roll call vote on docket number 055 pursuant to the Chair's request? Counsel Durkin.
0755.
0755.
Roll call vote on docket number 0755. Counselor Braden.
No.
Counselor Braden, no. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
No.
Counselor Durkin, no. Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Present.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, present. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, no. Counsel Flynn.
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Louie Jean.
No.
Counsel Louie Jean, no. Counsel Mejia.
Present.
Counsel Mejia, present. Counsel Murphy.
No.
Counsel Murphy, no. Counsel Peppin.
No.
Counsel Peppin, no. Counsel Santana.
No.
Counsel Santana, no. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, no. And Counsel Worrell.
Present.
Counsel Worrell, present.
The Chair recognizes, I think Counsel Coletta Zapata would like to motion a change.
Yes, I'd like to motion a change to my vote. I apologize, everybody.
Second.
To no.
Absent objection, yeah. Counsel Coletta.
To no.
Okay.
Ten votes against, one, four, and three, present.
Thank you. Docket number is...
Three present.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Three present. Right.
Yeah, so...
I forgot to erase the, yeah.
Nine, no, ten, no, and three, present.
Present, no.
Okay. Thank you. Docket number 0755 has not been adopted. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull docket number 0281 on page 12 of the green sheets.
Mr. Clerk, do you have that docket ahead of you, in front of you? Give us one moment, so that we...
0281?
0281, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please read that docket into the record?
From the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery, docket number 0281. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the EEC Mental Health earmark awarded by the Mass Early Education and Childcare Development to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund and support mental health training for early childhood educators.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can you please give us a page number for the green sheets if you have it?
Page 12.
Thank you. Absent objection, docket number 0281 is properly before the body. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This grant was filed by the mayor and placed in my Committee of Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery on February 7, 2024. This grant would fund and support mental health training for our early childhood educators. The goal is to provide two different professional development opportunities, first being reflective consultation for early childhood directors and supervisors, which aims to strengthen and support skills in infant and early childhood mental health. The second is early childhood staff, the Mass AIMH Infant and Early Childhood Mental Health Endorsement, an international credential that provides recognition of specialized knowledge and expertise for professionals working with or on behalf of families with young children. This small dollar amount will go a long way, and I'm hoping you will be able to pass this today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter?
Okay, Counsel Fitzgerald, Chair of the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery, moves to passage of docket number 0281. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, docket number 0281 has been, has passed. Anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? Okay. We are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are 10 late-file matters, all of which are personnel orders. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late-file matters, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you, the late-file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late-file matter into the record. Please read all of the late-file matters into the record.
First late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Central Staff. Second late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Central Staff. Third late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Peppin, personnel order. Fourth late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Fernandez Anderson, personnel order. Fifth late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Coletta Zapata, personnel order. Sixth late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Coletta Zapata, personnel order. Seventh late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Fitzgerald, personnel order. Eighth late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Fitzgerald, personnel order. Ninth late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Peppin, personnel order. Tenth late-file matter, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Peppin, personnel order.
Thank you. The Chair moves to passage of these late-file matters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The personnel orders have been adopted. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are three additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events. Do any of my colleagues have any announcements?
The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. This Saturday at 1:00 p.m. at Project Hope, we will be holding our quarterly town hall, but it's been divided into neighborhoods this time, so we will be holding the State of Roxbury at Project Hope, 550 Dudley Street. Please join us. This is going to give all constituents, or at least constituents that participate, the state of affairs and conditions or development updates on everything Roxbury. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, I'm personally inviting, I have invited you through emails or the invitation, but I am inviting Counselor Julia Mejia at large, Counselor, Counselor Peppin, I'm sorry, Santana at large, Counselor, Counselor President Louie Jean at large, Counselor, and Counselor Eric Murphy at large, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm just rising to congratulate two people. First is my intern, Desiree. She is graduating from high school and attending Florida A&amp;M University this fall.
FAMU, yep.
And also want to congratulate my little sister, who's graduating tomorrow from UMass Boston, so I just want to extend my congratulations to both of them, and love you, sis. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. I have a few announcements on birthdays. We mentioned his birthday last week, Joseph McEck...
McEckern.
McEckern, who's also celebrating a retirement, so congratulations to Joseph Carolyn O'Neil, celebrating a birthday. My sister celebrated her birthday yesterday. She is the best of us, so happy birthday, Kentia. Also want to say a congratulations to our colleague, Counsel Coletta Zapata, who got married this past weekend and is with us here today. Doesn't miss a beat, either here in chambers or on the dance floor, and so we are very happy for you. Counsel Coletta, since we will not be having a meeting next week, I want to just uplift some community events happening. There's the DOT Day Parade on the 2nd, which is June 2nd, Sunday, the Corob Classic in West Roxbury on June 2nd, the North End Cornell Classic also on the 2nd, and the day before on the 1st, we have the Urban League Healthy Vibes Health Festival, we have George Fest, Southie Family Fun Day, and also June is the beginning of Pride Month, so happy Pride to everyone. We are now moving on to memorials.
Oh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to share that we're going to be having public testimony on the budget on May 28 at 6:00 p.m. I've shared the post with everybody on Instagram, so please help get the word out. Let's try to make sure we fill the chamber in virtual Zoom with testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we share the post in other ways besides Instagram?
Well, we have it on email, too, but yeah, email, Instagram, I've shared it amongst a few different ways.
Awesome. For those not on the ground, okay. Any other announcements from any of my colleagues? The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to highlight, this morning, myself and Counselor Santana had a great visit with students from Excel High School in South Boston. Many of our colleagues came by to say hello, including Counselor Murphy and Counsel Mejia, I believe. I don't know if anyone else was, and Counsel Peppin was there.
That was the last, the last one.
But it was a wonderful, it was a wonderful visit, with the opportunity to listen to these high school students talk about their experience, and I learned a great deal from listening to them and the challenges that they face, but I'm also happy and fortunate that we have wonderful students that are in our public school system as well, that are doing their best under very, very difficult circumstances. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to know for the record that I was not at the, that place, in case you were wondering, that was Peppin. But no, I wanted to just rise, because this morning, we have a conference that's happening here in the city of Boston. The Aspen Institute has brought over 600 young people and those, and folks who work with young people across the country here to the city of Boston for their annual conference, and they brought it here to Boston, and I was on a panel with Michael Curry, and as well as Dr. Folk, and Nate from Teen Empowerment, as well as Carrie Mays, who, if you don't know, you better Google her. Carrie Mays is one of the most amazing young people here in the city of Boston. She is such a fierce advocate, and she was on the panel, and we also had Amanda Shay, Like the Butter, open us up in poetry this morning at the Park Plaza, so I just want to acknowledge the fact that we have hundreds of people from across the country here in the city of Boston, celebrating and uplifting youth development, so I want to give them a shout out and recognition, as well as the PIC program and Opportunity Youth for their work in bringing them here. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I did just want to rise to congratulate Joey McEckern, who was given nearly 40 years to the city of Boston. He had 27 years with Boston Water and Sewer, and many of you may remember him, for 12 years worked in Counsel Baker's office and has been in my office up to today. He retired today on his birthday, so I do want to thank him for all his years of service, and wish him a happy birthday, and congratulations. Like many people, when you retire now, like you said, he'll have one job, not have to have two, but wishing him all the best.
Thank you. Congratulations again to Joseph McEckern. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise, as many of you know, for those who know my story, I lost my oldest brother in 2016, and his birthday would have been, his 35th birthday would have been this Friday, May 24, and he has a big role in my life, and has had a major role in my life, and why I have dedicated my life to public service, and because there will be no meeting next week, I just wanted to rise to acknowledge him, Robert Santana, and also want to just uplift all parents, moms and dads, and guardians who have to experience losing a child, and I've seen what that's done to both my parents, and just want to keep in mind of, everyone has to go through that, so, you know, I love you, Robert Santana, we miss you, and may you continue to rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. We'll be thinking of your parents and your family this Friday. Well, we are going to move on to memorials. That was, if any of my colleagues would like to speak on behalf of anyone who they've lost, or that has meant a lot to the city. the city. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I'm rising in support of Barbara Rhodes. She was the children's librarian at the Jamaica Plain branch of the Boston Public Library. My kids and dozens of other kids at the Mission Hill School use that children's section as their after-school program, and it was wonderful. She passed away yesterday after a long illness. One of her colleagues wrote to me that Barbara was one of the absolute best children's librarians there ever was, and inspired countless library workers with her warmth, compassion, and ability to create community wherever she went. So I just wanna rise in support of her family. She's survived by her, her husband and daughter, and my thoughts are with them today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. I also wanna uplift the memory of Barbara Rhodes for all that she meant to JP and to our children, children's librarians who do incredible work, that she was an inspiration to so many. So I wanna also thank Maggie Levine for bringing this to our attention. So thank you, and may her memory be a blessing. If anyone, is anyone else looking to speak? Okay, we are going to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Coletta, Lisa Savard. For Counselor Durkin, Michael Renazio. For Counselor President Luizhen, Billy Jane Ashley West. For Counselor Santana, day of remembrance for the passing of Robert Santana. For Counselors Weber and Luizhen, Barbara Rhodes. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. As has already been mentioned, council is closed on, on Monday for Memorial Day, and we will have no meeting next Wednesday. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Eye and Ella Chamber on Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, at noon. Thank you to my colleagues, to central staff, to Neil, who is here for Dasi, to the clerk, and the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. Thank you to our municipal police officers, to Sergeant Seltzer, and to everyone for keeping City Hall safe. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.